Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Looks like it's 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We'll start with invocation by Pastor Dean Bailey, Victory Church of God.
Yes, I'd like to open in Scripture tonight. Over in Jeremiah 29:7 says, "Seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prosper, you too will prosper." I want to pray that our city will continue to prosper. Dear gracious, kind heavenly Father, God, I come before you tonight, Lord. I thank you for everyone that's gathering in this room, Lord. I pray for the city of North Platte, God. I pray that it will prosper and it will bloom and people will want to come to North Platte where they can put roots in this community, Lord. And I just pray for everyone that's here again, Lord, and just bless them in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
Prayer.
Here.
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 A current copy of Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of their council chambers. I would like to point out if you have a copy of the agenda this evening, if you look towards the top, you'll see the meeting procedure. If we can just go over that for a second. Says the public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor. An individual in the violation will be declared out of order. We'll go ahead and get started with the consent agenda. Item number one is approved minutes of March 7, 2017. Item number two, place on file MLW reports of February 2017. Item number three is place on file treasurer's report for February 2017. Item number four, approved request from Hershey State Bank to be designated as a depository bank for the city funds of 24, 2017. And item number five, adopt recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission regarding an application by Troy and Lindsey Douglas for Douglas First Subdivision located at 2402 East Philip Avenue.
We approve items one through five of the consent agenda.
That motion passes. Regular agenda. Item number six, action on recommendation by the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens' Advisory Committee to approve a $30,000 grant from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund to Mark and Dee Luttrell to assist in the restoration and repair of a historic building located at 520 North Jeffers.
I move that we adopt a recommendation by the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens' Advisory Committee to approve a $30,000 grant from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund to Dee, Mark and Dee Luttrell to assist in the restoration and repair of a historic building located at 520 North Jeffers Street.
Second.
Yes, sir.
I guess this question is going to end up coming back down to probably Mark or Dee or somebody, but my question is, whoever wants to answer it, are you guys planning to give us adequate documentation to make sure that this goes towards building repairs in terms of like receipts and copies of those kinds of things?
Yes.
Okay. And are you going to do that in the project periodically throughout? I mean, what's your timeframe on getting this building?
We're hoping to be open by the first of August.
Okay. So you'd be able to have most of those receipts in?
Sir, would you be so kind as to step at the microphone? Thank you. If we're going to have questions.
Sorry. So you'd be able to have them in by, for the end of like August, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay. And you're doing, are you the general contractor yourself then?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Welcome. Any other questions?
Jim, I'm sorry. I just had someone had contacted me and I understand that the money's going to be used for actually restoring the structure itself. Is that correct? The exterior of the structure or?
Well, I've got putting all new windows in, siding, there's some tuck pointing that's got to be done. I was going to try to address it just a little bit later and I've still got the corner of the canopy to fix. We've already braced that front parapet wall up. Okay. Thank you.
That motion passes. Item number seven, action on recommendation from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee to approve a $350,000 grant from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund to the North Platte Chamber Development Corporation to be used to implement the Worknp.com program of recruiting workforce into North Platte and Lincoln County.
I'd move that we adopt the recommendation from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee to approve a $350,000 grant from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund to the North Platte Chamber and Development Corporation to be used to implement the Worknp.com program of recruiting workforce into North Platte and Lincoln County.
Second.
Can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
I think you're on the right track there where the nationwide unemployment rate is 4.7 and the city or state of Nebraska at 3.5. We've got to do everything we can to get people here, so I think you're on the right track there.
Mr. Lee, go ahead.
Okay. Here's my question for you, Gary. It's going to come down to, did you guys do any research in determining that this would be, is this a big enough carrot to actually draw people to North Platte? You know, I know if I'm going to move to, you know, let's say a major city, a lot of times they offer a movement or recruitment bonus, those kinds of things to help with relocation, which is essentially what you're doing here. Is this enough carrot that actually is going to draw people? I mean, what kind of basis do you think that this is enough?
Well, you know, it's, it's an experiment, but it certainly is going to give our employers a bit of an edge. You know, everybody's competing for the very same workforce out there. The skilled trades especially are very challenging for the employers. It's inhibiting their ability to continue to, to grow here and they want to, the uniqueness of the program is the fact that we're reaching out to the local businesses that have already made a major investment here. They've already made, they have a successful track record. And we had a presentation recently from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development on a, basically a business retention and expansion program and they had some national statistics that they shared and that 80% of a community's economic growth comes from within. It comes from existing employers. So everything we can do to assist those folks that have already committed to this community, the better off we're all going to be. And so the target audience in doing that is non-Lincoln County residents because that's the only way we're going to truly be able to grow our workforce. We don't want to create a program that we're shoving someone out of somebody else's back door into somebody else's front door. This is going to help us do that. There's also a provision in there that allows us to reach out to mid-plains community college graduates to try to entice them to stay here rather than leave elsewhere for jobs. And there's also a provision that of graduating high school seniors willing to go into a specific trade skill that a local employer is seeking and they have a partnership relationship. They can use it for scholarship money as well. So it's, it's got enough creativity in it that I think it has something in it for everybody. And the fact that ever since we started talking about this program and we got a little bit of publicity thanks to local media, it was picked up by some statewide media in the State Chamber of Commerce and we had a significant amount of calls from people from different areas, different development corporations, different State Chamber Commerce members, all thought the creativity of it was something that was inspiring or at least cutting edge to doing something different than what's been done in the traditional sense. If you look at the very successful shot in the arm program that was implemented with the housing and how successful that was in getting an immediate response from area contractors and developers that came in and now we are going to have 48 more housing units here. And all but eight of those have already reached the drywall stage and beyond to where they've reached the incentive check. Sometimes it's not the amount that you do, but it's the fact that you're, as a community, you're willing to do it and you're willing to reach out and you're willing to partner with those people that are already invested both financially and emotionally in this community. And we, we think that we can do a lot of creative things to help that law. And recruiting today's workforce is a lot different than it was in previous generations. So we have to be more creative.
Gary, would you go into, I know in committee we went through this many times, but how, how many people that are in business now want to go into this program? And then what kind of a contract, like if I'm going to work for somebody, what do I have to do as a participant?
Program, this, what we're asking for is $350,000 match, which would be the local, our local chamber members that would participate would put up another $350,000. Every participating business would be limited to two, up to two recruited skilled positions. The positions have to pay $20 an hour or greater. They have to sign a three-year employment agreement. So what we're basically doing is up to $10,000. If they wanted to do it on a lesser amount, they're, they certainly can apply for a lesser amount, but they would, it would be like a performance-based loan that would be given to, that could be used in a number of different ways for relocation, expenses, utility deposits, down payment assistance, paying off student debt, a number of different things that's lined up in the program. And at, on the one-year anniversary of that three-year agreement, one-third of that is forgiven. So if they don't fulfill the contract, then they, through the agreement, there's a provision for payback and it's on a monthly payment basis over an extended period of time. And we'll work with the city attorney and city administrator to make sure that, you know, we have everything in compliance with the OB-840 state statutes and so forth to make that work. The employer has skin in the game, you know, they have to pony up as well. And so the burden is still on them to recruit the right person and to seek those folks out. But we're giving them an additional tool in which to do that as well as a collective team approach to where we're going to be able to, to have marketing and publicity over it. The employer or the recruited employee has to agree to live in Lincoln County and the incentive, in addition to the things I already mentioned, I mean, if they, if there was a specific, say somebody hired a mechanic and part of that responsibility to fulfill that position, they had to have their own tools. They could use it to purchase the tools. We'll make sure that there's the documentation that Andrew talked about with the receipts and the chamber, that's reasons we'll be administering it, so we make sure that we keep a file on every single employee, every single employer that participates. Our normal period of time in working with quality growth fund projects is you have an 18-month performance basis and so we want to launch this for 18 months. And it's going to be kind of on a first come, first served basis as our 600 chamber members are able to, to find key employees to, to fill those positions. We did a quick survey among our membership. We had 45 immediate responses saying they loved the program. Forty-two of those 45 said they had immediate job openings. Those job openings accumulated were 192. And out of 192, half of those paid, would pay greater than $20 an hour. That's before we ever set a threshold. But our, our economic development committee is made up of a lot of very engaged business people who deal with these kinds of issues on a day-to-day basis and through all their brainstorming as well as some of their frustration in being able to recruit people to grow their employment base was born the idea, just as it was with the shot in the arm of people being frustrated not being able to find housing in the community. So we think it's, it's innovative, creative. And bottom line, if it doesn't work to the extent that we, we think it will, the money stays in the quality growth fund for other projects. But we, we feel that the citizens voted quality growth fund in to create quality jobs. That was the overriding sense of why they gave the city the authority to say, "We want to bring more quality jobs to this community." This, this program definitely does that and we spread it among several. If I was standing here tonight to tell you, "We're recruiting a brand-new payroll into town, we're going to create 70 new jobs and they're all going to pay greater than $20 an hour," probably be an attention getter. To me, this is smarter economic growth because you're spreading it, you're spreading not only the risk of doing so, but you're spreading it throughout the community. And it, it may spur certain employers to even grow well beyond that.
One quick question, I guess. You talked about the caps and I love the two employee per business cap. That's a great thing to make sure it's not abused by any one or two employers. But my question, I guess, is coming down to the money part. So, you know, the cap on this is 5,000 out of the quality growth fund dollars for the business and then the business match was five. Is the business allowed to go up and above their own five?
Sure.
So like if Dan's hiring a market analyst, he can, he can say, "I want to give you $12,000" and he only takes five from the quality growth fund, right?
Absolutely.
Does seven out of his pocket? Okay. Thank you, Gary.
They have to show that match in order to get the other match.
It's just up to 5,000, match?
Right, right, right. Per employee.
You just said 10,000 caps, I just wanted to make sure.
10,000, yeah, but it's five plus five.
Okay.
Well, a couple of quick questions. This is 350,000 out of the quality growth fund. How much money do we actually have in the quality growth fund? What percentage of this is that?
We have just a hair over $3,000 or $3 million.
Okay. So, okay. And then my second question is, you mentioned the shot in the arm that we did for prior with the quality growth. How are we doing with that as far as the affordable housing? Because I mean, if we're bringing in, you want 70 guys or 70 workers making that 20 bucks an hour or more, we're looking in after taxes, the 35 up to $50,000 a year range. How are we looking at those houses that are under the $100,000 mark in town?
Well, housing and labor recruitment go hand in hand. We have to keep working hard at both of them. And we're, we're trying to get some projects off dead center that would help build some of those apartment units that are nice, that would be market rate, wouldn't have to necessarily be tied to income restrictions, but there has been some, some nice tax credit projects here that also cater to that low and moderate income. I believe you have another agenda item tonight that, that also is going to help address that. There are a lot of programs out there for low and moderate income, median income type housing that you can qualify for financial assistance. The, the challenging thing is the market rate housing that has no strings attached to it and you're just whatever the market bears. And to developers, they put the pencil to the paper and they just, they can't make it work to the point where you can have the rent levels where they think that people would, would pay. That's why things like tax increment financing for, to help support the infrastructure portion of that are so critically important when we bring those projects forward. I, I think a program like this would, would help energize some of those, those projects we're working on in the housing arena to maybe take that leap of faith and then get over that, that financial hurdle that, that they seem to struggle with.
Yeah. What I was kind of getting at with the housing and the shot in the arm was, it was my understanding when that was brought in that building the new homes, the people that owned the $100,000 houses would sell theirs to move into those has a lot of bad occurred, is what I'm hearing.
Well, I, I think there, it's kind of a mixed bag. I mean, Megan's doing a, one of the things we're doing is doing a tracking system which was required through the program and we'd say about half of them have maybe been, been sold at this point. Thirty, 38 of the 43 qualifying ones have, have already received their incentive check. They're not, they're not all have received the certificate of occupancy yet. But I, I think it's serving that purpose.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and I think there are some that would fit this profile quite well and just because it's $20 minimum doesn't mean that all of it's.
Yeah, it's, it can go up, obviously. That's why, I mean, I started at 35.
Yeah.
Price range goes up. I did speak with one business owner in town today regarding this and they said they actually had two people lined up right now that they could use this for. And then my other question is the other businesses that you have here, what was it, 45 employers in that price range? There are some I know in town that do pay that, that won't be hiring for at least the next 10, 12 months.
Yeah, well, that's.
So I mean, that was something you might, you know, to kind of help out to get some other employees. Because I mean, previous chamber always told us that the railroad was the biggest hinder of trying to get businesses here, trying to get employees here because they made so much there that they would come in for 10, 15 bucks an hour, then they'd quit and go there.
Yeah, well.
They're not hiring for 10 to 12 months, so just, you know, watch it out. So, there we go.
We're ready for the challenge.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, item number eight, authorize mayor to sign health and accident contracts for the city's self-insuring health and accident plan beginning April 1, 2017.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign health and accident contracts for the city's self-insuring health and accident plan beginning April 1, 2017.
Mr. Spencer, did you wish to come up and say a couple of words?
Just a couple of quick comments. I'll keep them short. My name is Spencer Thomas. I work as an account manager for Covicon. We help manage the, the health and wellness benefits for the city of North Platte. There's a, a document that's on, on your table that was already printed. If you want, I will leave, they're going to get shredded one way or the other, but they were printed. These ones are bound and if you guys want to pass those out, it's the same one, they will get shredded all the same. So it's like, might as well hand them out and those are nice and pretty. But just want to just touch on just a few, a few comments. The city of North Platte has adopted a, a few programs to help managing and control healthcare spending. That's something that's largely talked about in the media, a lot going on with the Affordable Care Act, a lot going on in Congress. Just a couple of things that I would keep in mind from that perspective, there is a lot of moving pieces and as we talk about healthcare, there's really not a clear path that is going to be moving forward. There's a lot of, a lot of talk in Congress on how they want to implement and change the Affordable Care Act and then there's a lot who don't want to have it changed and there's a lot who want to completely do away with it. So healthcare moving into the future at this stage in the game right now is very unclear. But a couple of things that we do know that are clear is that we have implemented probably one of the most robust and forward-thinking programs that are available in the market. There are really, there are three cost drivers to healthcare. The first is going to be an insurance company wanting to make profit. That is all but done away with in a self-funded health program. There is no insurance carrier other than really the city funding their own claims. And so you take that, that cost component out of the piece, out of the puzzle. The second is doctors wanting to make more money. Doctors go to college for a number of years to make, to make money and they have bills to pay and so they want to make more year over year. And the last is consumers, i.e. the employees of the city of North Platte, making choices on behalf of themselves for their health. But as with all companies, whether you're self-funded or you're fully insured, when you have a health program, their ID card is a city credit card. And I think that that's how a lot of people and how a lot of folks should look at it is that these, these employees have access to direct city funds and as they go see their doctor, as they go to the hospital, those funds are debited from the city's account. And one of the pieces that we really feel like, and again, one of the third highest cost drivers to healthcare is employees or members not making very wise choices when it comes to healthcare. And so one of the things that we've instituted with the city is, is called the ACTA program. And again, really what that is, it's, it's a concierge service for the members or the employees of the city of North Platte to have help and assistance as they go through the healthcare process. Just a couple of statistics, there's a number of reports and I'm going to make this brief and I'm going to skip over them, but there's one report, it's called the Care Coordination. It's the third or fourth page in. But there's a couple of impressive statistics because again, what we want to do is we want to help manage and, and take care of employees as they go through a very complicated system. And the city has a number of high-cost claimants, but what I find most, most impressive is that 100% of your members with claims in excess of $50,000, so this is again, employees who are incurring more than $50,000 in claims, 100% of them are having contact with care coordinators, individuals who are highly experienced in the healthcare system and are able to help guide employees to the right care and making sure that the, the services that are being rendered are necessary and most beneficial to them. And again, some of the things that the, the ACTA program does is it doesn't just help the members, it helps providers as well. It helps providers understand the medical program that the city of North Platte has. And over 50% of the calls that they make on behalf of the city of North Platte are actually to providers. So it's not just education for the employees, it's education for the providers as well on how plans are going to pay so that the employees aren't either left holding the bag or that it's, it's made very clear what and how this process is done. Again, I think it's, and if you look and dive deeper into those statistics, 97% of all members who have claims in excess of $10,000 have contact with these care coordinators. And the average call volume ranges anywhere from 9.2 to 21 times that these care coordinators are contacting and working with the members of the city of North Platte. Again, this is something that the city of North Platte can do to really help starve the largest cost driver that we have in healthcare and that is individuals making inaccurate or choices that they're just not aware of what they're doing. And so again, what this program is designed to do is really help curve healthcare spending. I'll take you to the last page and again, this is really the, the meat of what we're getting at. So this year, we are proposing that the city is going to have a 6.1% increase to their healthcare costs. National average sits anywhere from 8.5% to 10%. And over the course of the last five years, the city of North has, including the 6.1% that we are having this year, the city has had roughly an average of a 2.82% increase over the last five years in their healthcare expenditures. That is extremely unprecedented in our industry, something that we take, that we take great pride in as a, as an organization and our ability to work with the city of North Platte. So again, this year is a 6.1% increase is that, that's what we are proposing as an increase again to the, the claims reserve and then the fixed costs as well. But overall, the last five years have averaged out to just shy of a 3% increase overall for the city. So again, from an overall perspective, when the national average is anywhere from 8.5% to 10% year over year, the city's been able to manage their finances extremely well.
Spencer, you might also mention what we've been able to do with our reserve account too.
And Jim and I appreciate that. So there's been a little bit of news just in, across the state as far as reserve account goes. You know, there's, there's one city in particular that is slightly larger than, than the city of North Platte. Their reserve account is right at about the 1.5 million dollar mark. The city is just north of $2 million in reserve for their healthcare expenditures. Again, because we're a self-funded health program, the city's paying their own claims. We highly recommend and we believe that the city is, is funding to a very conservative, healthy level. Overall claims expenditures in a given year are just a little north of $4 million. So again, we just, we, we think that it is a highly conservative and a highly healthy habit that the city is in at reserving and being just north of $2 million. It's a, it's a responsible spot to be at. Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I appreciate it. Appreciate your coming here from Denver. Now, have a safe trip.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
As long as I don't get pulled over by State Patrol.
Yeah.
Nobody likes those green license plates.
And that motion passes. Item number nine, public hearing to consider Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, 2016 Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Program Grant Funds to assist the city of North Platte with rehabilitation of 12 owner-occupied dwellings in the city of North Platte and approve authorizing resolution and submission to the 2016 Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Plan Application Request to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. And I would remind you, this is a public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
I move that we, uh, allow for the Community Development Block Grant Program, 2016 Owner- Occupied Rehab Program Grant Funds to assist the city of North Platte with rehabilitation of twelve owner-occupied dwellings in the city of North Platte, and approve authorization, authorizing resolution and submission of the 2016 Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Planning Application Request to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, DED.
Second. Motion passes. Item number ten, authorize mayor to execute interlocal cooperative agreement with Nebraska Community Energy Alliance relating to the cooperative effort to promote the development of electric and compressed natural gas vehicles.
I move that we authorize the mayor to execute interlocal cooperative agreements with Nebraska Community and Energy Alliance relating to the cooperative effort to promote the development of electric and compressed natural gas vehicles.
Second. Yes, sir.
A year ago, we approved, I don't remember what it was, to put in natural gas tanks out here at Pine J.
No, what we did...
Is that part of this?
It's related to it. That actually came through a, through a private company called Circle, and, uh, yes, what they were looking at was putting in compressed natural gas. That equipment has been installed out at Pine J in the same vicinity as the liquid natural gas material. What this is, is a group of cities who are banding together to try and create a network of communities that would have available compressed natural gas and electric charging stations, so that it would make sense for someone traveling along the interstate to be assured that they would have a place to plug their car in and use this green energy. They're also working on research, uh, for, um, energy conservation when it comes to housing as well, and so, it's a group of cities who stand together to work, uh, together on these guys.
Uh, item number eleven, action on ordinance number three-nine-six-three to create Street Improvement District number three-two-one in east, in East Francis Street from four-hundred-and-forty-five feet east of the center line of South Paupers Street to the west right-of-way line of the South Tabor Avenue in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
A notice creating Street Improvement District number three-twenty-one in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and describing the various streets in said Street Improvement District and improvements to be constructed therein.
I move that we waive the three required readings on ordinance number thirty-nine-six-three. Second.
Second. Yes, sir.
Tom, is there a reason why we need to waive the three readings as requested?
The, uh, property owners that abut this have already come to agreement with us in the ri, writing regarding, uh, non-opposition to the district, and in fact, would like to see it put in, uh, at least in one case of one of the abutting property owners, so there's no controversy with it, and they also gave up the right of remonstrance. So, there's really no point in having it read three times.
Cool, thanks.
The other thing is, it allows us to tie this project in with some other work that we're doing.
Claims, item number twelve.
Do we pay the claims?
Wait.
We have been passed...
Oh, sorry. Let's back up just a little bit.
I move that we approve ordinance number thirty-nine-six-three.
Second. And that motion passes, thank you. And now, twelve, claims.
Move that we pay the claims.
Second.
Just out of curiosity...
That motion passes as well.
These twelve houses, have we picked those out, or have they picked those out yet, or would you have any idea? That's under ten, number ten there.
Yeah, no, I don't believe they have, but I know the judge's worked with, with Nancy Strebel on that, but I don't believe they've been identified yet.
Thank you for that question. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.